2024 to order, and if you would please stand with us for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Sandy, could we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Shippers.
Here.
Alabas.
President.
Ingalls.
Here.
King.
Here.
Mayor Folkins.
Here. And if we could get a motion to approve the agenda as it's been presented?
I'd make a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
Support.
Councilmember Alabas.
Yes.
Ingalls.
Yes.
King.
Yes.
Shippers.
Yes.
Mayor Folkins.
Yes, motion carries. We'll go ahead and open the floor for our first public comment this evening. Seeing no one, we'll close public comment and move to the approval of the consent agenda. In this evening, we do have the minutes from the work session that we held on April 1st, along with the council meeting minutes same day.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
I'll second it.
Councilmember Ingalls.
Yes.
King.
Yes.
Shippers.
Yes.
Alabas.
Yes.
Mayor Folkins.
Yes, motion carries. And this evening, we do have a couple of public hearings. Marcus, would you like to introduce those?
Yes, thank you, Mayor, members of the city council. We're going to invite our finance director, Owen Roberts, to provide the hearings. The first one is regarding the six-year capital improvement program. Just for reference, primarily for the public, really, this obviously is not the first time city council has looked at this information, reviewed this information. The presentations will be a little brief, but any questions you guys have, certainly feel free to ask them.
All right, thank you very much. So as Marcus said, this is the public hearing that we have each year for the capital improvement program. It's a six-year program covering the fiscal years from July, ending June 30, 2025, to June 30 of 2030. The purpose for planning, project coordination, doing roads and utilities at the same time, and to get public input and communicate these plans out, and so that they're not necessarily a surprise when these things come forward. This plan in and of itself is not required by any ordinance or rule of the city. The Planning Act does refer to having a plan for public structures and improvements, so this meets those requirements. The council does approve this plan each year, but it doesn't appropriate the funds for all of the six years of projects at this point, and we update this annually as part of the budget process. How do we define a capital project? As you know, just an asset or a project that where costs are in excess of $7,500, an asset with a useful life of more than one year. These comes from department requests, city council priorities, as we talk about those each year, citizen input that we get, community needs, and if we're successful in securing a grant, those can set a priority as well, and we do have some of those in here. For the current program that we have that identifies just over $31 million in upcoming projects, and that incorporates 128 different projects, so you can see the types of projects that are in here: buildings, utilities, infrastructure, really both above and below ground, other infrastructure, which in this case, the bulk of that is the downtown plan, streets and sidewalks, technology vehicles and equipment. We do have a major amount of heavy equipment in all of our operations, recreation projects and projects in the cemetery and in the industrial park as well. One of the most kind of sought-after information, I guess, each year in the CIP is the schedule for streets. Identifying the year-one streets is Leeson Avenue as a major street, and again, this, depending on where the bids and when the bids come in, this may actually be completed in the current fiscal year, but it's also identified so that we make sure we get that section of Leeson Avenue from the tracks over to 13th Street done before the end of this construction season. And the local streets, we have some money that we're identifying for just some various sections of repaving and Burlingame Street as well. And in years two through six, without the specific schedule, there's an additional almost three and a half million dollars of street projects. Utilities, infrastructure, very expensive, very just important to identify these things in advance. As you'll see, we're going to need some debt financing for a portion of those. Under-street infrastructure projects, so these would be water and sewer pipes and connections and manholes while we have a street torn up for major reconstruction. Eight projects identified, just over a million dollars. Sewer lining, this is while it's, we don't have to unearth the pipes to do this, and it can extend the life of pipes that aren't at the end of their life and collapsing. There's three years where we're identifying trying to do some of those, and that's year one, three, and six. It's less costly than replacement and extends the useful life of those sewer mains. The major project for utilities is the Headworks project. Headworks kind of being a fancy term, I think, for a lot of the equipment, buildings, pipes, and other infrastructure, sort of as the wastewater flows into the beginning of the plant there. And so that, it's pretty old out there, they take great care of it. We've done some upgrades over time, but there's going to be, there's going to be the need to do some significant projects. We've identified that for year three, and we've done that because we have a current debt issue that will have paid off by the time that we start undertaking this analysis and project, so the timing fits for us to be able to invest some major dollars in the system at about year three. This will also include some building improvements that are needed on some of those facilities. On the public safety side, these are some major cost-type projects. We've talked about the aerial ladder truck, looks really nice. Again, they take good care of it, but it is a 1995, so 30 years old, and typically, the life on those things is anywhere from 15 to 25 years, depending on how often you have to use it. So we've done a great job, I think, of extending the life of that, but really, it is time to identify the process for replacing that. And then the other engine, we replaced one a few years ago, but the other one will need to later on in the plan in year five. Police vehicles, six of those. You're going to award a bid tonight for equipment on the three that we just bought, they're not getting cheaper, so we used to be able to outfit the, buy them and outfit them for anywhere from 40,000 to 50,000, and now that's just the cost of the vehicle with another about 30,000 to outfit those with all the required equipment as we move forward. There's a number of other projects in here that really are, I would call them kind of transformative local projects that have been identified for the future of Cadillac. A lot of them are recreation-type projects, outdoor space, gathering space, and so we've identified a number of those. You've heard about the market screens, that project has already started. 750,000 of that is grant funds, and the other 100, we have identified some ARPA funds that we were going to, we were going to transfer over there to complete that project. And the other ones, Diggins Hill, there's a lot of momentum and energy on the street right now to get that project kicked off. $150,000 will be year one for the playground, and they're working real hard for some support and fundraising for that, and then to continue on with some other recreation there as well. The rest of these will require local partnerships, outside funding, and so we'll work diligently to identify those as well. So the city dock as well is another one of those, and the grounds and the area around there, we're going to start to study that here coming up soon. Kenwood Park is on there as well. Mitchell Street Corridor, that's the big other infrastructure, $6 million, kind of as a placeholder, no idea really the overall vision and scope of what that project will be. It's going to be expensive, and it's going to take some, again, some partnerships and outside funding for that as well. And then there's some parks in there to try and enhance our recreation opportunities in our, in our local neighborhoods. Again, the CIP, not necessarily for council as a required project, but just a diligent, prudent planning process that we go through each year. We are requesting council approve the program, and again, that approves the program, but that does not appropriate funds for the plan at this time. The CIP has been available for viewing on the city's website for about four weeks, and we did have the work session back in March. So with that, that ends the information that I have. For you to summarize that, I'll sit, and we can open the public hearing, and I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Okay, we'll go ahead and open public comment as it relates to this public hearing. Seeing no one, we'll go ahead and close public comment and move to discussion or questions by the council.
The old fire truck we sold?
We tried to, yep. The other one went to a local, small township.
Okay.
I can't remember the exact name of the township.
How much did we get out of it, Owen?
Not very much.
10?
$5,000 maybe, I think.
Somebody got a good deal.
Yeah, well, it needed, needed some work, and it definitely not one that you use every day, but we did, we advertised it on a site for a long time and didn't get any bites on it, so.
It went to a Harrietta Slagle.
Harrietta Slagle, yep.
Okay, all righty, just curious.
Okay, nothing else? Okay. Someone would like to make that motion?
Yeah, I'll make a motion to approve the fiscal year 2025 to 2030 capital improvement program as presented.
I'll second it.
Councilmember King?
Yes.
Shippers?
Yes.
Alabas?
Yes.
Ingalls?
Yes.
Mayor Folkins?
Yes, motion carries.
Public hearing number two regarding the upcoming fiscal year annual operating budget. Surprised you sat down?
Yeah, it seemed appropriate, but you know, I thought of sitting right here, but if I'd wanted to speak into a microphone if anyone had questions, so. Okay, so this now is the charter requirement for our budget hearing, and there are a couple of pieces of the information that we are required to talk about related to millages, and we'll talk about some fees, but just want to summarize a few things for you as we talk about the budget. There won't be any action, again, tonight on this particular public hearing. This is just for informational purposes as required by council. So you can see the requirements here. The budget to city council honor before the first day of April, a public hearing in the second half of the month of April. Budget adoption not before the 10th of May, nor later than the last day in May each year, and that has to be by a supermajority of council, and budget amendments can be made throughout the year. For the current proposed budget, it proposes revenue of $23.9 million with total spending across all funds of just over $25 million. So as we talked about in our work session a couple of weeks ago, the big red number can be concerning at first, but I think if we drill down into that use of funds on hand, it becomes clear that it's very intentional, and it still enables us to maintain the level of reserves that will protect us from any cash flow needs. The majority of the use of funds on hand, the 1.3 million from the general fund, and there are capital projects that exceed that number. We talked about structural balance in the work session, and we are still, even with the Headley news, we still will maintain a position of structural balance, so that's a good thing. The major and local street fund will kind of use the residual funds that are still on hand from the general fund transfer last year. The downtown infrastructure project fund is for the infrastructure in and around the lofts location, so as they complete their Phase Two, we still have funds on hand to do the street parking and sidewalk work around that project. The budget targets several important priorities that we talk about each year, again, protection of reserves, and then making important investments in street infrastructure for the year, 640,000 plus utilities and people. And you'll see there authorized staffing up one, CAPS received a second grant for an additional school resource officer, so we partnered with them once again to use those grant funds, and we brought an officer on staff to provide then two school resource officers for the local schools, and CAPS has been really, really great to work with and really grateful for our partnership in doing that. Public safety spending is about four and a half million dollars this year, so it's a little over half of the general fund budget. And then about $5 million in our water and sewer system to be able to provide clean water and effective and efficient wastewater treatment. These now are a couple of things that we're required to talk about as far as the millages go, so as we begin the discussion on taxes, just a picture here of what's happened with our taxable value since 2009, which was kind of our prior peak. So you can see for those first number of years up through 2018, a lot of, a lot of negative before in 2019 or so, then we've had a few years here of some good gains. I wrote "but" there on the bottom. The problem has been that our millage keeps getting rolled back because of the requirements of Headley, so still some growth, but less growth than we could have had. It is a restriction of a property tax burden as well, so it's kind of some savings passed down to the local taxpayers. You can see five out of the last seven tax years, we've had to roll back that millage. So for fiscal year 2025, our operating millage will be 13.3397 mills, and that's a reduction of just over .6 mills since 2017. So the impact of that is a reduction in our operating revenue from the levy of 186,000. In the current year reduction, that's about 48,000.
And Owen, correct me if I'm wrong, but we grew, what, 6%, which is an incredible testament to all of the economic development activity happening within the city. That's a, that's a great thing to champion, and just to iterate what you said, it's because we're growing faster than the state average that the state then rolls.
And the inflation average, yeah.
Right, the inflation average.
Yep. So you can see here back on this chart, the assessed value grew by about, oops, 15%, while the taxable value just, just short of 7%. So that is, the taxable value CPI was 5%, it hit the cap this year, so that extra over and above that would be new construction and new development, so. Here then is just a picture quickly of our total tax revenue, and then the captures that come out from the three tax capture authorities that we have. So again, repeating the millage rates, 13.3397 for operating, 2.6 for police and fire, and the DDA, and that's just for the parcels within the DDA district, 1.8058, and again, they were reduced as well this year from 1.8501 down to 1.8058 mills. Moving on to water and sewer fees, just want to remind you of this chart that shows that we do compare favorably to water and sewer systems in our region, upper, the northern lower peninsula and the eastern upper peninsula. At the time of the study, which was 2021, we are sixth lowest out of 47 responding systems in the water, and the sewer was 11th lowest. That was 2021, they've not yet updated that study, so this still is the latest study. If we applied our last few years of increases only to ours, we'd still be top 20 in sewer and about top 10 in water, and that's if no one else did anything. So we still compare very favorably to water and sewer systems in our region. For the last 15 years, this is what has happened with our rates, as we've tried to, you can see over the last few years, tried to build up to be able to do the debt service on our new well field, and completed that project now. We will present some additional information from the municipal analytics that has been helping us out with some data analysis as we move into the public hearing, as we talk about water rates over the next couple of meetings. So that, just to interject with, those ordinances will be introduced at the May 6 meeting, and then public hearings and scheduled for a vote on May 20, so still some time for Some other quick budget highlights as we wrap up here, the market is in there, again, talked about that, that grant has been received, and that project is already in process, so we expect to see some bidding documents coming here hopefully soon. The Consumers Energy grant funds, we still have some of those left, so some micro parks, facade grants that we've been just recently re-advertized for, and some blight work as well. The downtown infrastructure that we talked about, we do have still some public safety contract revenue coming in, MMR for the ambulance, Clan Lake Township for fire, and the CAPS SRO, this was 50,000 in the last budget, but up to 125 that CAPS is contributing for those two SROs for the next year. Solid waste recycling, because of the contractual indexes, those are expected to go up about 46 cents a month, so a couple of percent. And again, some caps that we negotiated into, especially the solid waste contract, took effect the last couple of years to really help the, just restrict the amount of increase for those services. And then some additional funds for blight to help bolster our enforcement activity. So we have quite a lengthy budget process, starting just after the first of the year. We're kind of at the third big step of that with the public hearing tonight. The ordinance will be introduced on May 6 with a public hearing and a vote then on May 20. The public, or the budget has been available for public review in the clerk's office, and it is online as well for those who may be interested in taking a look at that. Again, here's my contact information, happy to have any discussions with anyone that would like to do that at any time. So once again, I'll sit, and we can have questions as appropriate.
Thank you. This time, we'll open public comment as it relates to this public hearing on the annual operating budget. Seeing no one, we'll close public comment and move to discussions or questions from the council.
I would, the couple of comments I would make is, again, to invite people to go online and look at the budget. I think there were some important things that happened at our work session that people may know. Council specifically talked about dedicating funds to enforcement of different ordinances we have, that people have been concerned about. Following that, I got more feedback that has, have we talked about enforcement with some of the traffic downtown in the summer, problems with people racing up and down, and I said, those are the types of things we need feedback, because when you give us feedback, Marcus is then able to work with Owen and Adam and plug those things into our budget, so we're doing it. So this really is a process that invites the public to say, what's important to you? And if you can give us that information, then we can see what we can do. So I was very happy with our work session, that we took feedback, have plugged it in, and now we're getting this rumbling. Give us feedback, give us feedback.
Yes, the motorcycles are running.
Not just motorcycles, trucks.
Trucks, yes. So, okay, well, we don't have to take any action on that. So that then takes us to a couple of communications that are on the agenda this evening.
Yes, it's being recommended to approve the display of a banner from May 28 to June 3, 2024 for the farmer's market.
I have a question, if I may, before we, before we do that. So I watched the guys with the cherry picker, whatever it's called, to bring the banner up. Can you, is there an estimate for what it costs to put a banner over the main street?
I wouldn't know what that costs, sitting here today. We could look at trying to develop one, but I will say that in the most recent interpretation and working with them that, on the permission of having banners going across their right-of-way, the city needs to somehow be a part of the event. And so it's our interpretation that we are a part of the event by putting the banners up. That's our sort of buying into it. If we were to charge for that, we're, there's no, there is no other mechanism in which we're sponsoring or being a part of it, and then for any of the banners, we'll.
I think that makes sense. It's a good way to help different events in town.
I know that in the past, we've only put banners up for nonprofits, and the farmer's market is not a nonprofit.
That is correct.
The farmer's market is a private business. Does this open us up to be putting banners up for other private businesses, like, you know, big sale at wherever?
It does, and the new person with the M-DOT office clarified that it's allowed. Again, as long as somehow the city is sponsoring whatever the public event is. So there, I mean, there are various qualifiers to it. So somebody saying, hey, I want to have a sale at my, at my shop, whatever the shop is, perhaps might not actually qualify to being able to get a big banner across Mitchell Street, but the band boosters having something or some other, you know, activity that's out there.
But band boosters isn't a private.
No, but it's also not, it's not.
Not a nonprofit.
Yeah, it's not a nonprofit.
Right, it's just, but it's associated with the school.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's just, and I know that people don't realize that the farmer's market is a private business.
Correct.
That rents the space at the market, so I know I get people asking me things about the farmer's market, and why don't we do this, or we do that, and this is not a city thing, this is not a, it's not even a co-op like it used to be, it's.
Right. And we were surprised when we connected back with, with the M-DOT contact. I don't recall who the person is, I didn't make the call myself, but they sent it to us in writing, saying, here's what, here's what the rule is, and as long as you're meeting it, you're okay, so.
I'd make a motion to approve the display of a banner from May 28, 2024, to June 3, 2024 for the farmer's market.
Support.
Councilmember Shippers?
Yes.
Alabas?
Yes.
Ingalls?
Yes.
King?
Yes.
Mayor Folkins?
Yes, motion carries.
Being recommended to approve the closure of Sunset Lane from the senior center to Selma Street from 8:00 AM to 11:00 AM on May 27, 2024, for the Rotary Stride for Strive Memorial 5K.
I'll make that motion to approve the closure of Sunset Lane from the senior center to Selma Street from 8:00 AM to 11:00 AM on May 27, 2024, for the Rotary Stride for Strive Memorial 5K.
I'll second it.
Councilmember Alabas?
Yes.
Ingalls?
Yes.
King?
Yes.
Shippers?
Yes.
Mayor Folkins?
Yes, motion carries. And then we also have a couple of appointments.
Being recommended to approve the appointment of David Klein to the Downtown Development Authority for a four-year term to expire on April 15, 2028.
David's here, I think, right?
Yep.
Would you mind introducing yourself to the council?
My name's Dave Klein, I own Threads North Downtown. I've lived in Cadillacs since 2015.
Your new store is great, by the way.
Thanks.
Yeah, so, okay, thank you.
I do have a discussion point.
Okay.
Mr. Klein and his business are absolutely wonderful, and when we got our packet, I had no idea who that was. David, I didn't connect your last name with what I heard. I'd like to see somehow in our application, whether it's staff or whatever, can follow, because I understand your address, those things have to be blocked out, but to put in some of the stuff, because as soon as I connected David with Threads North, I'm like, this is perfect for the DDA, but when I first got our packet, because there was so little information, I had no idea that's what that was. So I'm going to have fun, and I think you're going to be great on it, but I think it might be something for us, just so we can have more information when we review.
Yeah, and I think when it comes to the planning commission or the DDA, you know, we're a little bit more concerned than some of the other boards, so definitely, you know, something like this is very important, so I'm happy you applied, I think you're a qualified candidate for sure.
Absolutely. Absolutely.
Good.
I'd make a motion to approve the appointment of David Klein to the Downtown Development Authority for a four-year term to expire on April fifteenth, two thousand twenty-eight.
Support.
Councilmember Ingles?
Yes.
King?
Yes.
Shippers?
Yes.
Alabas?
Yes.
Mayor Fokens?
Yes, motion carries. And now the city managers report.
One more.
Oh, I apologize, I just.
Being recommended to approve the appointment of Brian Warner to the Local Development Finance Authority for a four-year term to expire on April fifteenth, two thousand twenty-eight.
I'll make a motion to approve the appointment of Brian Warner to the Local Development Finance Authority for a four-year term to expire April fifteenth, two thousand twenty-eight.
I'll second it.
Councilmember King?
Yes.
Shippers?
Yes.
Alabas?
Yes.
Ingles? Yes.
Mayor Fokens?
Yes, motion carries, and I will say that I serve with Brian on the Brownfield Redevelopment Authority, and he is a wonderful resource, so he's a good committee member.
Lucky to have him.
Yeah. Now it's the city managers report.
Thank you, mayor, members of the city council, a couple of items for your consideration this evening. First one is with respect to an out-of-state travel request, as it was actually mentioned, I think earlier tonight, about the DDA and Main Street, we are looking at, or the DDA is currently looking at becoming a Main Street USA certified city. The National Main Street USA Conference or Convention is being held later next month in Birmingham, Alabama, and the request is to send two staff members accordingly to that, to that convention, we believe there is enough value there to justify the five thousand dollars expense, and I am recommending the city council to please consider approving the request.
Another, another comment point that I have is, I've been going downtown a lot, visiting our businesses, buying stuff, I'm concerned right now with our community development, that a lot of our stores and businesses do not feel that the city is necessarily friendly to deal with or listening to them as to what they need, and they're afraid of the parking assessment coming back and the sidewalk assessment, which will make it non-cost-effective to be able to have their stores downtown. There have been concerns expressed to me about the Cadillac West corridor that we've not paid attention to them. I am concerned about spending five thousand for an out-of-state trip when I don't think that we're necessarily talking to and meeting the needs of our downtown. Several people kind of took, my wife and I, up and down Main Street, which we're up and down all the time, and we have a lot of vacancies right now. And the question is, what are we doing and why are we not hearing any plans? I've explained the city's not in the business of necessarily being the developer, but we should be in the business of creating an environment for which people think it's friendly to come do business and for which they don't have to be afraid of a curveball getting thrown in that would increase their costs unexpectedly, and therefore I'd like to see resources spent on that communication and, and getting the feedback before we do what I would see as kind of an extravagant out-of-state travel.
Well, I, I kind of disagree, I know of, I know the, Trevor, the owner of Einstein Cycle was absolutely stunned, both Dave and Trevor, stunned at the responsiveness and welcoming nature of the City of Cadillac for their business coming in. I have not, you know, I know you've got some bones to pick, and I think that whenever there's an opportunity for networking and education that makes people do a better job, know more about how to do the job, it makes everything better. I do not see this as a frivolous expense, just like I don't see any other educational opportunity as something that's frivolous, and the amount of this is not going to, you know, what are you talking, yeah, how does that transfer to your complaint that you have for our development department, that I have not frankly heard as much as I believe you have? And, I don't know, I've, I've heard the absolute opposite from people that I know that have businesses in the community.
In, in just in response, there's no bone to pick, this is an observation and a perception and from feedback. And, and if you look at our downtown and the vacancy rate, I think it speaks for itself too, and I think we did a great job with Einstein's, I think that was a quick, so it's no, it's no degradation on our successes, but it is an observation of our failures to attend to the other needs for it.
If I may, just for everybody on council, one of the, one of the highlights of the, of the conference itself, and it's in the second to last paragraph in the communication, it says some of the topics to be covered include art, health, event programming, financing, and councilmember King, to your point about empty spaces, activating empty spaces, marketing strategy, including branding, storytelling, measuring downtown impacts, rightsizing regulations, housing and data-led, data-led placemaking, walkability, and creating a needs-based entrepreneurial ecosystem, and so, I mean, that's a whole big mouthful of stuff, but, you know, one of the, one of the key words of, or one of the key programming areas about activating empty spaces, and honestly, as I sit here tonight, I, I couldn't tell you what our percentage of vacancy is in the downtown, I know that, you know, there are places that are there, that are not there, then places come in, you know, there's, there seems to be a constant almost turnover of downtown local, you know, proprietors. We hope that, that will slow down eventually, but since, since I've been here, that seems to be going on, anyhow, there is that piece.
Okay. And, and I would just add that I think that, you know, your concern about empty store spaces, that's warranted, right? We've got work to do, but I also think that ongoing education is important for our staff members to get, I mean, the, the young lady that works in that department, this could be invaluable for her growth in her position, it's something she's not ever been able to participate in, and it also says to me that we're, we know that the downtown wants to do this, this, what, what was the name of the program, I, I'm drawing a blank.
Main Street.
Main Street, thank you. And to me, this is us investing in that desire for our downtown to be a part of that program, and so getting our staff members to the event to be as knowledgeable as possible and coming back, it's just like when we go to conferences, right? We bring back, we bring back things we weren't even thinking about when we went there, and it's like, that's a great idea, you know, we can bring those things back to our community. And so, you know, I don't disagree with what you're saying, but I also would say that we have an opportunity here to provide some additional education to our staff members on a really important program for our downtown, so that they can be more supportive to the downtown business owners.
Yeah, I think I would say, you know, without invalidating any of your concerns, you know, I'm a, a big believer in investing in people and employees who are willing to put in the effort to improve their skills and knowledge, because you don't always get willing employees that are geared towards self-improvement, and when, when they want to go to a class, when you can send them to a class and you think it's valuable, I'm gonna have a hard time saying no to that. And I, you know, the Main Street program, the Main Street approach, you know, I've, I've been following these guys, I read the material they put out, I think it's a very positive, it presents a very positive vision, they come up with some good ideas, so, you know, I am going to support this travel expense, without remarking on any of the other conversation that, that was going on, so.
I'm good. I already know I'm gonna vote, let's just do it.
I'm gonna make a motion then to approve the out-of-state travel request for the Community Development Director and Coordinator as presented.
Councilmember Shippers?
Yes.
Alabas?
No.
Ingles?
Yes.
King?
No.
Mayor Fokens?
Yes, motion carries.
Okay, thank you, mayor, members of the city council, good, good discussion, I do, I do appreciate it. Give me one moment, just want to make sure, okay. Next item for council consideration are the bids and recommendation regarding the police patrol vehicle emergency equipment. I, I think perhaps it was, it was when council approved the acquisition of the new police pursuit vehicles, which by the way, if you haven't seen yet, they've been delivered and they are parked outside, it's the three white Dodge vehicles. It was either, maybe Owen, was it you that mentioned the upfitting cost, or Adam, one of the two of you?
Yeah, we talked about it.
Yeah, about how, essentially how, you know, goofy they are nowadays, and it's because it's, it's more than just, as, as I know, some of you know, it's more than just lights and a switch, it's essentially installing multiple, multiple computer systems and all the things that go with it in a car. And so, we did put it out to bid, the recommendation is to go with the lowest bidder out of Mount Pleasant, Michigan Pro Comm Inc. in the amount of eighty-six thousand, ten dollars and sixty-nine
I'll go ahead and make the motion to award the purchase and installation of police patrol vehicle emergency equipment to Pro Comm Inc. in accordance with their bid. Support.
Councilmember Alabas?
Yes.
Ingles?
Yes.
King?
Yes.
Shippers?
Yes.
Mayor Fokens?
Yes, motion carries. And that wraps up the items on our agenda, we'll open the floor for our last public comment for this evening. Seeing no one, we'll close public comment and move to good of the order.
Mayor, I have one item.
Okay.
I received notice from my contact yesterday evening over at DTE that their contractor has experienced a scheduling delay that is going to likely push back the start of the natural gas improvement and expansion program by two to three weeks. He wasn't entirely sure on the, the date, and said he'd keep me in the loop, but it was originally scheduled to start today, there's been a lot of media, thank you, press on that program, but it's gonna be pushed back a couple of weeks, it's out of the city's control, but they're doing all the notifications, the information regarding how to contact DTE for those that are affected, all of that is the same, including the contractor, it's just a delayed start.
Thank you. No, you're good.
I have some things, if I could.
Absolutely.
First of all, this past weekend had some really cool events, I love to see all of the things happening in our community that, that people participate in, and now that the weather is getting better and watch people out walking about here, there, and everywhere, it's just, it's just wonderful, there's so many great things happening in Cadillac, including this coming Sunday, the twenty-first is Earth Day at the market in the Cadillac Commons, and that's from one to three-thirty PM, and there will be vendors and exhibits and a bunch of giveaways, free trees to every child who comes, and we've got tote bags, and we've got all kinds of fun things, music, there will be music happening, so please come to the, to the market on Sunday between one and three-thirty, and then on Tuesday at three o'clock, the Cadillac Mayor's Youth Council will be meeting in these chambers, and did you want to mention the Rotary?
Oh, yes, the Cadillac Rotary is holding their annual fundraising, we are having a gala this year, the project that was chosen was a children's playground for Diggins Hill, and so our conceptual drawing should be back any day now, we're excited about it, and we're just really excited, the Rotarians are really excited about this project, so tickets are on sale on the Rotary website, you can get them from any Rotarian, and so mark your calendar, it's gonna be a great event, it's gonna be at Fox Hill, and we have some nice surprises that are going to happen at the event, so I encourage everyone to come.
And the Thursday night concert schedule is out.
It is?
Yeah, it is.
Great.
So we got that to look forward to.
Yes, indeed.
I just have my favorite theme in the world, and thank you to Marcus, I've been getting several calls from bikers as they're getting out and walkers about, can we get our bike path cleaned in the stretch of the White Pine Trail in the city, the, the machine, the rotating brushes have been out, so people.
Power broom.
Power broom. It is happening, but again, thank you for the calls, Marcus, thank you, I contacted you right away and Ken was able to tell us that the machine was out there and working, and people are loving going around the lake and down the trail, so.
There's a lot of people out and about dressing like it's July.
Today.
Intrepid northerners.
It's summer. Okay, Robert, did you have anything? Okay, nothing else then, we'll go ahead and adjourn, thank you all.
Thank you, everybody.